I don't guess there's any reason for us to go ahead and dial in right now, especially if it's going to be being recorded for the next how many minutes, uh, it's like 15 minutes before we start.
We have a caller on the line.
Yeah. Is that me?
Yeah.
Okay.
Maybe get him to try to get another sound.
Good morning, who's called in? Good morning.
Good morning, it is. It's Bertrand Jaiton.
Hey, Bertrand.
Hello.
Welcome.
How you doing?
Welcome. Good to hear your voice.
Thank you.
Thank you, we'll be starting in about... Go ahead.
Hi, this is Mr. Blatchett, Judge Blatchett?
This is he.
Hey, this is Kevin, I'm just saying.
Hi. Hi, Kevin.
Yeah, we are both here, uh, I was hoping to ask you a question. If you remember, I told you, uh, about eight months ago to make a, uh, skydiving operation, and, uh, you were okay with that, and I asked Mike Marshall.
Thank you.
And, uh, we have been working on that, so that would be the subject, uh, I would like to speak about with you.
Very good. Once we get started, there is to receive your comments this morning.
Okay, so I will hear your voice asking for my comment.
That's correct.
Okay, so we will, uh, from now on, uh, we will stay on this phone and, uh, we wait for your prompt, am I correct?
That is correct.
Okay. All right, say, I, I, that looks to speak with you.
And you as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
Kevin, are you also a part of the, uh, skydiving commentary?
Yes, sir.
Okay, very good, thank you. You'll be given some instructions a little bit later on regarding just keeping your phones muted so as to avoid background information, and just, just be aware of that, okay?
Okay. Thank you very much.
Shame we don't have any background music that we can play, which would give people the thought that at least, you know, they're receiving... Yes, especially with, yeah, as quiet as it is.
But not Star Wars. I really like it very much. Martin's here.
Oh, good, he's on.
Good morning, John.
Hi, Martin. Welcome, good morning. Good to have you. Pardon?
Good morning to you.
Well, thank you.
You're welcome, yourself.
Yes, I'm welcoming myself. How's the signal where you are?
Tyler.
Oh, Tyler, okay.
Tyler.
I, I got it.
Think it's better than it was last time.
Good, good, good. I trust the weather is well down your way?
Beautiful. Been about 57 in the mornings, warming up to about 99.
What a contrast, right?
Really is. Yeah, that, you go out and, and with a long pink shirt on, it ain't take you long, but getting rid of that stuff.
Yeah. Good deal, everybody okay, doing all right?
Everybody's fine, actually got a, uh, my son, daughter, and granddaughter going down yesterday.
Oh, what a blessing.
We got the business, but we didn't get in touch.
Uh-huh. Well, the governor would sure be proud of you. And so with this president and the CDC...
I know where you live.
He is scheduled to, uh, do a press conference at, uh, 2:30 today, so we're looking forward to finding out what his plan is.
Do you have any idea what he's coming up with?
I don't have a clue, there's a lot of speculation out there, his, of course, theme has been to open Texas back up. But we're all eager to find out what that's going to be.
Well, I'm ready.
Along with millions who share your same sentiments. We do have a caller, good morning. Who's on the line with us?
Uh, good morning to, to Chris from...
Hey, Chris. Good, good to, good to hear your voice.
Tch, tch. Hey, Judge, uh, quick, I have a little trouble with the, uh, the YouTube link, um, that was in the agenda.
Okay.
I'm trying to access it and try to type in URL and everything, but it says the link did not, the channel did not exist, is that the same, are you broadcasting live on the same channel that you use for your broadcast, your updates here lately?
Uh, I'm getting a no, it's a different channel, did you see the current posted agenda? So it had been changed.
Okay, um, I've got, the, the most current one I have is Friday. Hold on, just a second.
One?
OnePLC, okay. Okay.
ZOMO04D capital L, eight, little l, NG.
I think I know what I was getting wrong, I think I actually, I think I probably typed a capital O in place of a zero in one of those, so... Let me try that.
Okay.
Fast and see the...
Yeah, we, we did change it up for this particular meeting.
It's still saying it doesn't exist, but I'm typing again and...
Stephen Sturrock.
Hello, Stephen Sturrock.
How you doing, sir?
I'm well, and yourself?
Doing well.
Well, we got an echo, don't we?
Yeah, I, I had, I was watching you on YouTube, there it was delayed.
Oh. Okay, search for Tyler County team...
I turned my page down.
Texas? Search for Tyler County, Texas, on YouTube.
Tyler County, Texas.
Right. Chris is on the line with us, Stephen, he's trying to log into the YouTube channel to get, catch live.
I found it, Judge, it's like the fourth one down, see it, very good.
Okay.
It's sometime... Oh, wow, that's, that's kind of strange.
Good morning.
I'm going to sign off your phone just then, because the, the signal stream is better on the, uh, the YouTube channel, so.
Okay, great.
Be home there.
Good deal, thank you for joining us, Chris.
My pleasure, thank you for all the technical assistance.
Of course, it's great to have Calhoun Productions on, uh, on standby with us. They're a new media group here in, in town. That's, that's the nickname that I've given them. We're learning a new communication method here in Tyler County. We're about three minutes until, uh, the start of this commissioners' court meeting, so feel welcome to visit among yourselves, and then we will get the meeting started promptly at 11 o'clock, as soon as Mike comes on, we'll find out what his wishes are, we do have a new, another caller, good morning, who's joined us?
Good morning, this is Buck.
Hi, Buck, welcome.
Thank you.
Buck, are you joining us on a conference call, or are you joining us by way of YouTube?
I'm on with my phone.
Okay, very good, thank you. Let's see, we have Stephen and, looks like Martin both on the YouTube broadcast? No, just...
I'm on the phone.
Oh, okay.
I'm watching it, but I'm on the phone call.
What was your comment, Martin?
See, I'm on the, their meeting...
Okay, good.
Website or whatever.
Good, you can see us then.
Yes, I can.
All right.
I can see some of you, some of you want to show your face.
Well, they're, uh, they're a little bit camera shy. The configuration of the courtroom has changed up a little bit to accommodate the broadcast purposes, and of course, we're using it as an EOC and have been for the last, gosh, five or six weeks, I guess, did you notice our favorite county clerk? Oh, you weren't looking?
I saw it.
Miss y'all.
I met everybody.
Are you going through a little withdrawal symptoms over there, Buck?
I don't know, I'm just ready for this mess to all be over.
Well, you know, I'm a hugger, so you know how miserable I am.
I am too.
All right, it's officially 11 o'clock, I'm going to go ahead and call roll. I'm sorry.
I don't know if I gave you the wrong spinning threads.
Okay, we do have a quorum of the commissioners' court, we want to go ahead and begin this commissioners' court meeting, letting the record reflect that this meeting has been due to call and posted accordance with the Texas Open Meetings Act, and, uh, it is the practice of this court to exercise an invocation and a pledge of allegiance, I believe we are suspending of the pledge of allegiance at this particular time, if that's the request of Commissioner Marshall, if he's joined us yet, Commissioner, are you on the line?
I just, I just disconnected from him, he should be on the moment apparently.
Oh, thank you, Jackie, hi, good morning.
Good morning.
Let's give him just a moment to, uh, join us, and let's also go ahead and put in for the record itself, since we're recording this, that pursuant to the March 23rd, 2020 suspension order by Governor Abbott, this commissioners' court meeting will be held via teleconference and live stream to protect the public, staff, and members from potential exposure to the coronavirus, also known as COVID-19, the public is invited to view this meeting live at the following YouTube location, of which we posted, and additionally, a recording of the meeting will be posted to Tyler County website, it is on the homepage and the public notices calendar page soon after the meeting. Okay, as Commissioner Marshall joins us. We have, uh, on the line with us and by way of YouTube, either way, Commissioner Nash, Commissioner Sturrock, Commissioner Hudson, we have our county clerk, Donice Gregory, present, I believe Jackie is, uh, on the line as our county auditor, and we have Mr. Chris Edwards, also a couple of folks, um, from the public, and it's Mr. Bertrand Jaiton, and then Mr. Kevin Lochesay, who will be providing some comments, Mr. Jaiton will in just a moment, have we had anybody additionally join us? We've had two additional?
Yes, sir.
Okay, hey, Mike Marshall?
Yes, sir.
And we have an additional person join us, who, who's joined us, please? If you have not identified yourself...
Treasurer here.
Well, hi, Madam Treasurer?
Hey.
Okay, does that take care of everybody so far? We, there's still one or two more? Okay, there's one more, if you've not identified yourself, Donice is going to want to put your participation by your name in with the records and the minutes, so if you could identify yourself, if I'm not already called your name. Anyone else? There may be going to be anonymous or mystery, uh, vistor with us. Okay, Mike, do you, uh, wish to...
Yes.
Provide for an invocation?
Uh, yes, sir, it is, Jackie's...
She is, she's on the line.
Okay, yeah, she's going to look for us this morning.
Before we start, Jackie, let me go ahead and give this, uh, disclaimer, it is the practice of this governing body to exercise an invocation, any person who is uncomfortable with this practice is invited to either mute their phone or possibly step out of the courtroom and then rejoin us at, uh, in the, following the invocation, with that being said, if you would want to mute your phone for the next 30 seconds, and then we'll yield to Jackie for her prayer, thank you. Jackie?
We would, we pray that thou would be with our virtue followers, people who are suffering the natural disasters, the virus, fought against so many people and friends that are suffering from various illnesses and types of situations, we pray that thou would be with them and help with them and help us to know how we can be of better service to them, we as the followers, we conduct county business that we might do so in a professional and concise manner, and we ask thee to go with us throughout this day and help us in all that we do, we highly pray, amen to Jesus Christ, amen.
Amen, thank you, Jackie. All right, just for each of you who may not be observing by way of the YouTube video, we do have, uh, our commissioners' court coordinator Jill Davis in the courtroom with us, along with Kate Tenney, who will provide some information if it's requested pertaining to an item that's on the agenda, with that being said, we do have someone who has requested to speak to, uh, the governing body this morning, and Commissioner Marshall, I think you have, uh, coordinated for Mr. Jaiton to, uh, to speak to us this morning, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay, well, he is on the line with us, and let me go ahead and pull up our...
Let me...
Go ahead, Commissioner Marshall.
I, I was just going to say, like, quick, that, uh, they had, he has contacted me a few weeks ago, uh, about, uh, doing a, a skydive and video out of the airport, and I think that's what they want to do.
Very good, he did identify himself a little bit, uh, earlier whenever we opened up the line, and so I believe he's on the line and ready to start, and as soon as he starts, I'll start the timer, if that's okay with, uh, everybody, that way we'll know, we do provide for three minutes of public comments, and, uh, Mr. Jaiton, are you on the line?
Yes, uh, can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Yeah.
Please feel welcome to start.
Here we go, um, about, uh, uh, December, uh, 2018, I have requested, uh, some guy that's a perspect, expert to, uh, to, uh, try to make a big drive over here, uh, so I can say that, uh, I have this opinion, everybody, uh, say that it's, uh, it's a fantastic career, I'm suited to the, the topic and, uh, the economic position, it's been that, uh, and, uh, so I, I went ahead and, uh, just to say, we are, I'm here with Kevin Nash on, on, uh, excellent skydiver, a line, and, uh, we would like to get at this point, uh, what correction, kind of revision of scope, uh, to proceed and make some, uh, skydiving operating, or, uh, what I would say, I think it's, it'd be a, it'd be a good, we give back depth, and so far, I received all the, the, since from, uh, F A C, and, uh, Kevin Nash will say here, uh, will tell you a few words about, uh, how you feel, uh, this is economic, uh, operation could have around here, well, there's, uh, not only the, the...
Kevin? Hi, Kevin? Hi, Kevin?
Yes.
We are having difficulty with, uh, the transmission, and it's difficult to hear everything you're saying, and it's important to us to be sure that we hear it correctly, so if you will, um, uh, I don't know if maybe it's the volume on, on y'all's end, I'm going to turn it down a little bit here and see if we can try to get a better signal with you, okay?
Let me test one, two, three, four.
Yes, much better.
Does Kevin have three minutes or...?
Kevin will have three minutes, yes, all right?
Okay.
All right.
And I may refer back to, uh, Jason in a minute for his remainder of this time, but, uh...
Very good.
Yeah, uh, what I wanted to say, what I wanted to say is, I thought we, we obviously kind of did on this ourselves, we understand that, but we also under, want y'all to understand and will that, you know, it does bring in outsiders that normally do not participate in Tyler County situations, because people that do the skydiving or the, uh, other training, they will come from outer areas to, to participate in events such as this, which, while they're here, not only are they using the facilities of the airport, they're also going to be using other facilities, such as restaurants, stores, and, and other things, so we have checked out all the safety protocols and such, and I believe Reno has turned over some documentation to Mike Marshall that, that gets a release, so that it's not a burden on the county whatsoever, it's just that we would like to get y'all's written authorization to, uh, help us to, you know, to bring such an event in, other areas that are not too far away, such as, uh, Madisonville, we've, uh, frequent in their location and observed all that they do, and they have a skydiving outfit, they also have another one in, uh, Tennessee, uh, we're just kind of caught up in a unique situation here, location, not situation, location, for where, we're, we're in a good position to bring in, to, you know, to benefit from this and the, the Tyler County itself, so we're, we're hoping that you'll get any questions, we'll try to answer them, um, but we're hoping you'll allow us to do this, we sure would appreciate it, and I'll turn it back over to Reno.
Okay.
Hey, I have a few more, um, we, the, the goal here is to, uh, every employee that will be, uh, from washing the aircrafts or wanting to begin to learn, I'm an A P also, I can teach to fly, I can teach, uh, the mechanic, uh, as one of, as the food providers, people that would come, uh, we would look in the county, um, and try to hire for the task that would be coming, uh, like, uh, you know, single mother or, uh, uh, people are out of, out of luck, you know, the, with the condition of the coronavirus, uh, some people are losing their job, so, uh, we have this period, I thought it would be, uh, a good thing to preside at the, the end of our term here.
Anything further?
Uh, yes, if, uh, we can have an answer relatively early, uh, we invest in, you know, air glades and curtsies and, uh, all sorts of, uh, you know, things, improvements for the office here, uh, so as soon as the, the ban for the coronavirus, uh, will disappear, we need, uh, financially, we would need to, uh, get into business.
Very good. Okay, Commissioner, you're, uh, aware, of course, of this conversation, since it's been going on for a, uh, exchange between Reno and Kevin and yourself, do you want to add any comments at this time, Commissioner Marshall? Commissioner Marshall, can you hear me?
I'm sorry, I had muted.
Okay.
But, yeah, I, I, our location is a great spot for, you know, something like what they're talking about, because of the low volume of planes that come in, uh, I mean, anything I feel like that would bring in, uh, attract people to our county would be good, so, uh, I don't know, like Reno was saying, you know, with the, uh, virus, they don't have it, everybody's shut down, I noticed nothing they could start immediately, but, it was something we just want to break before the court and, uh, and, you know, get it bug it on or whatever to, uh, try to get it, get it going along.
Sure, at this point, we don't have an action item on the agenda, this is just public comments, I would certainly think that, uh, you, Commissioner, could coordinate with Reno and Kevin the additional details and bring whatever document before the court at a later time to go ahead and make it formal action. All right?
Yes.
Thank you very much. All right, let's go then to...
Thank you, Reno.
Yes, Reno, and Kevin, you're both wel, uh, certainly welcome to stay with us if you'd care to hear the rest of the commissioners' court meeting this morning, otherwise, thank you so much for your comments. Okay, let's move...
Thank you so much, we're here.
Oh, you're welcome.
You're welcome, appreciate your time.
Yes, sir, thank you both. Let's move to our consider, approve, and informational portion of our agenda, and that we have minutes from the previous meeting, both the special meeting of March 2nd, as well as our regular meeting from April 13th, those minutes should have been transmitted to you, and I will await your motion to receive those minutes into the record for both of the meetings.
I'd like a motion to receive the minutes, uh, Mike.
Thank you, Mike. There is a motion, is there a second? I'll second those, so we have a motion and second to receive the minutes from both the, the March 2nd and the April 13th meetings, is there, uh, okay, so... the March 2 and the April 13 meetings. Is there... Okay, so any... Let me just go down through the list. Martin, what is your vote?
Yes.
Okay. Stephen?
Yes.
And Buck?
Yes.
Okay, so it's unanimous. We received the minutes into the record. The next eight items Jackie is going to be bringing to our attention, and I'll call them out as each item. The first one is our budget amendment line item, trans first. Jackie?
I don't have any to present before the court at this time.
Okay, so we'll move to item C, which is paying of the accounts or accounts payable. Jackie?
Yes, I have a question that are being paid. There's nothing out of the ordinary in this group of bills.
Thank you, Jackie. Is there a motion?
I'll agree with you.
Thank you. And I think I heard Commissioner Marshall second that. So we have a motion with second to Commissioner Nash's motion. Stephen, how do you vote?
Four.
Okay. And Commissioner Hudson?
Four.
Thank you. That is unanimous. So we will move to, by unanimous, to pay the accounts, the accounts payable. That'll take us to item D, and that's the payment of the transfer of county antennas and equipment from the leased space, which was on the Burtman Tower to a county maintained tower with payment coming from contingency. Jackie?
Yes, I think most of you should be aware, I sent an email out with the new, as you know, that the towers that we are currently on was sold, and the new owners want a different setup, which would be significantly higher in the rent that they would want for us to use it. So I've talked to Donald, and he was able to move our equipment to the do set tower. And we still have antennas that are there, which requires somebody to have to climb that tower. And so Donald was able to find performance communications out of Livingston, and their price, and I emailed this to you, is $3,000. And it's got 324756. Once I presented with the tax event form, the tax will be reduced, so it was making an even 3,000. And I'm requesting of the court that we be allowed to bring equipment off of this Burtman Tower, or what we know as the Burtman Tower, so that we do not have to pay the increased fee that the new owners want.
Okay, there's a request. Is there a motion?
Stephen will make that motion to higher...
Thank you, Stephen. Is there a second?
There is a second.
Thank you, Commissioner Nash.
I'll take it.
We do have a motion with a second. Commissioner Marshall, how do you vote?
I vote four.
Okay. And Commissioner Hudson?
Four.
So it is unanimous. We will authorize Jackie to move forward with contingency line item payments for the transfer of the county antennas and equipment from the Burtman Tower. That'll take us to the payment of the COVID-19 expenses out of emergency disaster fund. That is a line item that does exist within county government. It is funded, and Jackie brings that to the court's attention. Jackie?
Yes, we have the designated emergency disaster relief fund. We have line items in there for various items that are just like standard disaster. This is a different kind of disaster than what we're typically used to.
Amen.
As you're aware, we have a mutual aid agreement with other counties, with Jefferson County, and it'll require us to extend county money. And I'm requesting that I'm allowed to create a line item within the emergency disaster relief, one for local expenses for what we actually buy ourselves here, and then the mutual aid, one that says mutual aid so that we can separate what we're being assessed. We're being assessed 4.68% of Jefferson County's expenses pursuant to the mutual aid agreement. And so I'm asking that I can also create a mutual aid one that would be very easy to track our expenses with the mutual aid agreement versus what we pay locally. And that way, if we, when we apply for reimbursement on anything, because I am told that we can reply for reimbursement on the mutual aid as well as what we spend locally. And so I'm asking the court if I can do this, pay these expenses out of the emergency disaster relief fund, and create these line items easily trackable.
Okay. I'll go ahead and put that in the form of a motion. And gentlemen, I'll just update you. We've been aware of the fact that Fund 42 is designated. We do budget for that particular item. These are emergency expenses that are associated with it. The 4.68 is the population percentage relevant to Tyler County of the six counties that established or stood up what was called a joint E O C. We have been beneficiaries of the joint E O C in a variety of different capacities, which would include also the testing sites that we've been sending Tyler County citizens down to. You may recall, it was initiated down in, at the Jacks Brooks Airport, and then an additional facility, which more of the Tyler County citizens had been going to the Salisbury unit once that was established up there as well. So that's my motion, and I'll wait a second.
But are we making any payments or just creating the line items to make payments in the future?
What I understand Jackie to say is that she wants to track these expenses in the hopes...
Okay, I understand that. Are we making a payment today on anything? I don't think invoices on anything.
Jackie?
No, sir, we are not. We are, it's my understanding of the Jefferson County auditor, that she's sending invoices and keeping a running total to me of what Tyler County expenses are, as well as the other counties. And when this is over, is when we will be required to remit payments to Jefferson County.
Okay, so what we're wanting to do is create two line items in Fund 42, so you can track expenses that we will approve and spend in the future for COVID-19 expenses. Correct?
Correct.
Okay, I'll second that motion.
Okay, thank you, Stephen. So we do have a motion with second on the table. Is there comments? Hearing none. Commissioner Nash, how do you vote?
Yes.
Commissioner Marshall?
Yes.
Commissioner Hudson?
Yes.
Thank you. That is unanimous. And so, gentlemen, thank you for that. Ken and I have been operating this last six weeks out of that. We made decisions under the belief that there were monies that were there. Jackie's request, as has been clearly stated, is she just wants to create line item because this is a different type of disaster than what we have historically budgeted for or prepared for. So thank you for that, everyone. We'll take us to item number F, and that's a retainer, and Jackie brings that item to the court regarding county road repair grants.
Jackie? Hi, gentlemen, I thank you as well as I participated on a webinar on Friday regarding the money that would be available. This money is typically, it's like the other Starks grant that we did a couple of years back, a few years back. And it just has a little different rule and things that we have to do. But they've opened it up with, to apply for it, April 27 to May 27. And so that means things have to move quickly. But before we can do that, it needs to be approved. And Allison Bass and McGee sent an agreement with everyone that notified us of this potential as well as the state, grant money that could be possible for us. And they would help us with the application process, because it's a quite detailed application that we would have to present. And so my request is to approve the agreement, the retainer agreement, for Allison Bass and McGee to help us facilitate the application, whether calling it the tip grant through the state.
Speaking of start, make that motion to retain Allison Bass and McGee for the county road security.
Thank you, Stephen. Is there a second?
Nash, I'll second it.
Thank you, Commissioner Nash. We do have a motion and second. Commissioner Hudson, how do you vote?
Four.
And Commissioner Marshall?
Can I have a comment?
Oh, thank you. Please go ahead.
Can I have a comment?
Yes. Commissioner Nash, if you will, go ahead and share your comment with the court.
Jackie, did they, did they give you indication what the legislation date would have been?
Yes, it's on the agreement that I emailed you, and I can pull it up here real quick again with the second.
Make sure that we're not spending that money.
It's a percentage with a limit on it, also a dollar amount in it.
Okay, okay.
It's limited, don't have much, they won't charge us.
So was this the...
It should be on your document that Jill sent to Martin.
Was this the grant, I mean, was this the one that was like $200,000 or something for the county?
To it, yes. That's what we're making together, what Jackie did.
Yeah.
It was, I honestly had the idea of this.
Yes. Stop going without money.
One we were looking at. Isn't it the one we were looking at the other day?
That's why I think so. Yes.
I mean, and you certainly, I mean, the only reason I put this on the agenda is if you want to move forward with applying for it. If you don't, then there's no reason for us to approve it. I mean, that's up to y'all.
But that amount, that $200,000 is, is that every county applies for it, that is eligible to receive the money, and they all apply, and they all receive their money. So that's the minimum amount of money that we get. So if there's leftover money in that, in what they talked about in that webinar the other day, the county still don't apply, then it's leftover money, it's just put back into the deposit, divided down to the county that did apply. That's what it does.
There's 212 million, and there's 254 counties. So theoretically, it'd be a million-dollar county.
But it's based, it's based on your overweight tickets, overweight permits, and your oil and gas production wells. They're the formula for it. So it's not only just overweight trucks, also oil and gas production.
Yeah, and out of the 254 counties, last time, there was less than 200 that applied for it. So that's all got added to the pot to what's in.
Right.
Well, I think we all waiting on my vote.
Well, let's go ahead and finish. Any further comments or discussion? Is there...
I'm ready.
Anybody else have any comments? Questions? Okay. Mike, what's your vote?
I vote four.
Okay. So we are unanimous to move forward with the retainer with Allison Bass and McGee, has a specific percentage, but not to receive a total amount, which would be a cap. I do have that document in front of me, gentlemen, and I'll go ahead and execute that at the end of the meeting. That takes us to item G, and that's the awarding of the road and bridge materials, including hauling for Tyler County. Jackie?
Yes, if you recall last meeting, I opened the bids, and then I emailed the bids that we did receive to each of the commissioners. I'm asking, given the COVID-19 crisis that we've been in, the mail has been stagnant some days, some days we get mail, some days we don't. We received some bids afterwards, and, you know, they were trying to figure out how to get them here with our offices being close to the public. So I'm going to request that we don't award the bids, and that we go out for bids where I can give specific instructions how they can get their bid to me in a timely manner, and because we're all trying to figure out what the new normal is. And I'm asking that we reject all these bids and go out for bids again where I can make sure that everybody that typically bids will be able to bid.
Okay, so you're requesting a motion to reject all bids submitted for the road and bridge materials, including hauling for what we've received so far. Is there a motion to that effect?
Speaking of start, when we get motion.
Thank you. Who was that to follow it? Stephen? Mark? Martin, is that your second? Okay, we do have a motion and second.
I'll second. Yes.
Okay. So with the motion and second, Commissioner Marshall, do you vote also to reject the bids?
Yes.
And Commissioner Hudson?
Yes.
Okay, so it's unanimous. We'll reject the bids as opposed to award on item number H. It's going to take us down to item I, which is the seeking of bids.
Yeah, thank you some.
Sorry.
Good, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Petroleum products.
Yeah, sorry. Okay, so we're on petroleum products. Jackie brings that to the court?
Yes, and I emailed those to you as well, received two bids, and it's the ones that typically will bid on our petroleum. I think we had another big group, but I don't feel the need to reject these because we usually just get the one bid. We got an extra one this time. So it's up to the pleasure of the commissioners what they want to do on this one.
Okay. Is there a motion for the awarding of any bid on petroleum products?
I'll make a motion, make a motion to award petroleum product bid to Gardner Oil Company based on the calling of the deal.
Okay, there is a motion. Is there a second?
I second, second does by Mike.
Thank you, Mike. We do have a motion with second, Commissioner Sturrock, and second by Commissioner Marshall for the awarding to Gardner Oil for the petroleum products for Tyler County. Commissioner Nash, how do you vote? Okay. And Commissioner Hudson?
Yes.
Okay, so it's unanimous. We'll let the record reflect that the awarding of the bids to Gardner Petroleum. All right, now that'll take us to item I, and that's seeking bids for road and bridge materials. Jackie?
Yes, I put this, I called the legal department and asked, could I put this on the agenda with the anticipation that the bids would be rejected, and they did give me to the affirmative that we could do that, or that I could put it on there. And so I'm going to ask for it to be approved to seek bids. The only thing I have to ask is, we are on April 27. If we approve to go out for this, I'm wanting to know the court's pleasure of when you want to open bids, what timeframe do you want to do that? The next Commissioner's Court is maybe 10, and then the next one would be...
Maybe 11.
26.
Maybe 11?
Okay, I'm looking, I'm sorry, I'm looking at a Sunday for another day. I'm sorry.
In the 26?
We got the 11 and the 26. So what I'm asking is, do you want to open and award, like, open on the 11 and award on the 26, or do you want to open on the 26 to allow more time? And I just hope for it to be right after a holiday, because that's what messes up with the one in April. We had the Good Friday holiday, so the mail didn't run. For the people that typically got their bid in because the mail didn't run, we would run into the same problem if they're not on top of it, because we have a Memorial holiday. So I just want to know what the court's pleasure is when we open and when we award on what dates you want to do it.
Okay. Thank you, Jackie. Comments, gentlemen?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion that we open and award the bids on 26 of May. That's to give that up. We're running out of time, aren't we, Jackie?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so the motion...
And also, do we...
Thank you, Mike.
Do we need to have all of them as well?
Yes. Yes, I want to, I'm going to put that in there. The fact saying going out for bids, they just didn't get stated that way on the agenda, that's probably not all.
Okay, so we have the motion with the...
Stephen will second it.
Okay, thank you. I actually already have a second, Stephen, thank you. For the, that's okay, seeking of the bids, and then also to include that the awarding will take place on the 26th of May. So we have the motion with the second, and Commissioner Sturrock, I believe that you're probably going to be for this, is that correct?
Correct, I'm for it.
Okay. Commissioner Hudson?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. It is unanimous, so that...
The only...
Go ahead, Jackie.
The only thing I want to make sure is that it's opening award on the 26th, not just award.
Yes, that is, that is my...
Okay, good deal.
That is my...
Okay, so that is an opening and awarding on May 26th. Just a clarification for the record.
Yes, thank you.
You're welcome. Item J, I'm going to bring to your attention, gentlemen. We have come to a place with the courthouse activities through the architect, and on the first of April, I sent a letter to THC indicating that we were aware that it started the first day of a 365 day to our deadline. And so we've received an email asking for a request of when we are going to get started, and I responded back to that. We have had some conversations with the architect. There is one item that was not included in his initial work for the plans and specifications, and that was for the technology drops. That is the only item that we need in order for those plans and specifications to be complete and in our hands, so that when there is a time that we move forward with this, and we'll probably want to have a workshop, that, that will complete that portion of need that we have, so that we will have those in our hands. I'm asking you today, if you will, to allow us to authorize LaBeach to finish this by the including of the technology drops into each of the spaces, so that he can complete the plans and specifications for the county. There would be some additional costs. We have already authorized for the payment and paid him for what he's done up to this point, but we do need to finish that up, so that we will have completed plans and specifications. So I'll put that in the form of a motion to reengage the services for the exclusive purpose of adding the technology drops to the plans and specs. I'll wait a second.
I'll second with you.
Thank you, Mike. Let's go ahead and have some conversation on it. Gentlemen, does everybody understand what we're doing and only what we're doing?
We are only allowing them to finish the plans, and then we're paying them additional costs, and have other policies, and correct.
Correct, correct.
Okay, I'm for it.
Okay, so that would be, we do have a motion with second, and then your comments of clarification, Commissioner Sturrock, are well received. Is there anybody else? Are you ready for the question? Commissioner Nash?
No.
Okay, so you're no?
Yes.
Okay, so you do...
No, I, yeah, I'm reluctant, yes.
Okay, so you're a reluctant yes. You're not a hard no, right? Okay, thank you. Commissioner Hudson?
Yes.
Okay. And Commissioner Sturrock, I think you were with your comments. What is your vote?
Yes.
Okay, so we're just going to reengage the services to complete the technology drops to give us completed plans and specifications, and that's the action of the court. Item K is the investment report, and I believe we have our treasurer on the line with us. Good morning again, Leanne.
Good morning, how everybody?
Doing well, thank you.
Good. I hope that everybody received, didn't smell it, and there are a few hard copies available about this request. The main part is, by law, I'm required to submit quarterly reports. I normally include it with my track report. However, I wanted to point out a couple of things. This time, so that's why I separate. The main thing to give to everyone is the drastic drop in rates, and we want to see more of that, and I'm a pro of rate. But on our pools that we invest in to spread our money here, those rates have taken a significant decrease, starting in, as far as our tech pool rate, we started at 1.34 as of today, the prime rate, where it's 3.2. The major change comes to the sector's class rate, which started at the beginning of March at 0.94. Today, we're at 0.48. So we're not going to recognize or realize the amount of interest that we did in 2019. And I just wanted to, I mean, the West Coast economy just really does some great gymnastics, but right now, we're looking at a very slow realization of interest on our investments. I will meet with the investment committee in the next couple of weeks or so to see what direction we'd like to take. We have the money that needs to be invested, and we have the money that I'd like to change around. The full prime, which is a paper, more risky than, is obviously bringing in more yields. You're not supposed to look at the yield, but I think that it would serve us well to put more money in that account. Martin, I do need to ask you, are you still interested in the investment committee? Are you ready to relinquish that responsibility, or are you going to see that as an individual?
I'm sure the court, whatever they want me to do.
Let me, let me help out.
Okay. So we...
Leanne, let me ask Martin a question. Martin, are you willing to continue to serve throughout the rest of your term?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Does that help, Leanne?
It does, thank you. So anyway, that's pretty much where we're at. I think that we still are quite diversified. We're still going around the correct path. We're still earning interest, we're not losing anything. We tied up money in some diggities, and I think that was the thing to do at the right time. We're still earning anywhere between 1.5 and 2.1%, depending on the length of the diggy. So as far as our financial stability, as far as the investment, so I'm pretty sure, I would caution that we need to leave that money alone to let it do what it needs to do. So, and then that, that is my report.
Thank you, Leanne. Good, good report. Are there any questions of Leanne? If not, can we get a motion to receive the investment report?
I'll make that motion, Mike.
Okay, Mike, we have a motion. Buck, can I use yours as a second?
I'll make mine.
Okay, we do have a motion and a second for the receiving of the investment report. Commissioner Nash, how do you vote? Oh, wait a minute, anybody have any comments?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Stephen?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Thank you all that we do receive that investment report. This is an informational item, gentlemen. As you know, the veteran service officer usually provides for us a report. There has been very, very little activity. She has had some meetings, I say meetings, some discussions with several of the veterans who had some significant needs, but as, as a regular report, there's been virtually no activity going on. It's been very limited. Martha comes in on a periodic basis and checks emails, as well as some of the voice messages on the phone, and then they just didn't have anything to produce for us, but I did want to give you a report on that. On the courthouse remediation project, I think that we will let the action item that we took regarding the reengagement of LaBeach to finish up our plans and specifications suffice for this point. The roof has been completed. The door coming out of what is referred to as the penthouse portion, which is the old tower onto the roof, was completed last week. My belief is that project is totally finished at this point. That was the only item that was pending. Gentlemen, I will tell you that there has been a lot of, of activity pertaining to COVID-19 that we have processed on an ongoing basis. I think you're familiar. We try to pass on some information that's relevant to you whenever we have something. I think that you could expect for us to put some type of document in place either this afternoon or tomorrow, once the governor identifies what his plan is and what his requirements are going to be. Other than that, I have nothing for any executive session unless anybody has something to say, and I will entertain a motion to adjourn at your pleasure.
Motion to adjourn.
Thank you, Mike. Commissioner Nash, I'll take yours as the second. And Commissioner Sturrock, you ready to adjourn?
Yes.
And Commissioner Hudson, are you ready to adjourn?
Yes.
It is unanimous. We will stand adjourned, gentlemen. Thank you all. That concludes the commissioners' court meeting. Have a good day.
Thank you, go for it.
Thank you, thank you.